Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call together to order this regular meeting of the King George County Board of Supervisors. We're going to start out this evening with an invocation by Mr. Granger and the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Miller, so if you would all please stand. All right, thank you, Mr. Granger. Mr. Miller, thank you. Mr. Miller, any amendments to the agenda tonight?
I believe Mr. Collins would like to ask for an amendment.
Mr. Chair, request that the closed session be divided into two separate motions, one being the county attorney's performance and salary, and the other one for the non-disclosure agreements.
That's fine. I guess did it just get omitted, the original or the other one about the county attorney?
I thought that was on the original agenda that was published.
It's not on our, it's not on our motion.
Oh.
The language is in the agenda with the statutory authorization. So I can pencil it in for you all if you'd like.
Mr. Collins, why are you not happy with this?
I have some questions on one of them. One of them is pretty straightforward. The other one, I have a few questions for, in discussion before we go into closed session in regards to it.
So, Mr. Collins, are you asking that we would go into closed session for one, come out, and then make a motion to go into closed session again for the other? Is that the request?
No, sir. Two separate motions, one for the discussion and consideration performance of the salary of the county attorney, and one motion so I can enter in discussion on one of the motions.
Ms. Lackey, could you help me understand how we would have two different motions? Because once we were to make a motion to go into closed session, we'd be in closed session, and then we couldn't discuss the second one. My understanding, could you help me understand, is there a way to go about doing this as Mr. Collins is requesting?
If it was the will of the board, you could have separate motions and one closed session sitting for multiple purposes. Usually, the motion is made for all the purposes that are intended, but Mr. Collins would prefer that they be separated.
So, we would make a motion, and if it were to be approved, we could just start making the second motion to have the discussion and not go into closed session immediately?
Right. You wouldn't have to come in and out of closed session. If you granted the request, you could have separate votes on the two different authorizations to close, to go into closed meeting.
I appreciate the clarification. Thank you. I'm amenable to that. If we wanted, do we need to make an amendment to the agenda, or is it just when we come to that, we just make it a two separate motions?
I think we can make two separate motions at a time.
At the time, okay. So, we don't necessarily need an amendment to the agenda, it's just you would like to have that considered during that time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm amenable to that. I'll let my colleagues speak if they have any concerns. Okay.
Okay, that's fine. We'll do, get to that, we'll do that when we get to that part.
And there are no other amendments to the agenda?
No other amendments? Okay. Thank you. Okay. At this point, I will open the floor up for public comment. This is going to be general public comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, we ask that you offer those comments at the time of the public hearing. So, at this point, anybody like to come up for general public comment? And if you can state your name and address before you start speaking?
My name's Anthony Stats, 9007 Clare Street. First, I want to wish everyone a, hope they had a happy Thanksgiving. I know I was fooled for like a week or two after. As we're entering budget season, I just want to caution everyone, like I always do, think about long-term, not short-term revenue gains that you can spend, 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 but long-term 10, 15, 20-year plan for growth. Our growth in King George is not that much. It's about 1.2, 1.6 percent depending on the year. So, let's not spend crazy hoping that future growth will accommodate that spending. Second, I was looking over previous budgets, and one item I saw was litter collection. So, we used to pay $5,000 for it, now we're paying $4,000 for it. I don't know if you've seen the litter that is collecting on our streets, that is something of major concern to a lot of the people I speak to, is just the cleanliness of our community. You see it in Dahlgren all the time when I'm going to Maryland. I mean, it is becoming a really big issue for our community. So, I would like to see if that is, we, I was talking to Supervisor Bender about this, if we have a community organized event where, hey, we pay for your coffee and doughnuts, let's, as a community, let's clean up this trash for the morning, or if we just spend more money on getting more people to do it. I think that would be a really good program to start, and I hope everyone has a great day. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Good evening.
Good evening. Bob Baird, 15316 Kings Highway, King George, Virginia. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I just want to thank you, all you members of the board, and all the members of the county staff, for all your hard work this last year in dealing with the many and varied issues that have come before the county and its governance. You all have done an excellent job. I haven't always agreed with everything, but you're doing the best you can for our county. One thing I do want to mention, and it's nothing your fault at all, but within the last year, perhaps a little longer, the county committed a number of hundreds of thousands of dollars to the extension of high-speed internet into the county and down to the northern neck. I was totally in support of that. It's something that we all need badly. I was very disappointed, however, when I talked to a senior official from the company that is installing that system, that's saying that even though we asked you to grant right-of-ways across your property to run our lines, we can't, you can't even ask us to increase your internet speed for two years till we spend out the federal grant. We simply have to serve the underserved before we can offer it to anybody else. So, for another two years, I'm stuck with a service that I'm finding to be increasingly unreliable, and that was quite disappointing. If there's anything we can do to improve competition and create better service for those of us who use high-speed internet, it would be appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Baird. Anyone else for general public comment? Slavello, can step right up.
Hi. My name is Anna Maria Lovell. I live in residential lakes. I came tonight to thank all of you for the service you do to the community and your attendance in King George events to meet some of the citizens in King George. I also want to ask for more information about the broadband. When my husband went to their website, he said that it will be for people who don't have internet, and they will have to put down a deposit, and then they will see if you qualify. I would like to know that. And also, from me and my family, we want to wish you a Merry Christmas, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Fairfaxes.
Debbie Fairfax, 623 Kings Highway. Mr. Chairman and board members, thank you for the work that you do for our county. I've come to have a much greater awareness over these last three months of the level of commitment and diligence that you give in filling this role, and I thank you. There is a unique challenge to being on the board for such a time as this, and I truly believe that each one of you wants to do what is right. So, I urge you to continue in your resolve to do what is right. It is simply not right to put next to someone else's home what we would be unwilling to put next to our own. This is a basic do unto others as you would have them doing to you. It would be ugly to expect some citizens to take one for the team up to having a house that is unlivable or unsalable so the rest of the county could live in greater ease. So, let's not set that precedent. We are so very fortunate to be in the midst of updating our ordinances. Let's resolve to do this right and establish solid noise ordinances that will be enforced to protect residents. Please voice that fact publicly, that you cannot and you will not support a proposal that does not guarantee proper noise limits. You will recall that our noise ordinance limits noise to 75 decibels, which is 10 to 15 times higher than other localities, and has no mention of frequency. With the opening of the new Nice Bridge, the Dahlgren District and the Shiloh District will also be areas targeted by corporations as well. Look carefully up and down 301 at all the land for sale. We need to be prepared and resolved to protect those living near any proposed industry. The way to enable industry and citizenry to peacefully coexist is through proper ordinances. To do this, we will also need to demand the details. By the time a corporation is asking for a rezoning, it's time to bring the details into the light. There is indisputable wisdom that says if one does not want to come into the light, it's because one's deeds won't be deemed good. We simply cannot allow corporations to come in requesting a blank check or a variation on the theme of a blank check. Telling what you won't do or listing things that you might do is insufficient for good decision-making. That is what the public and the Planning Commission has been given to weigh in on lately. A public hearing where the details aren't disclosed is neither public nor is it a hearing. I resonated with an editorial dated November 2nd entitled "Keep NDAs Out of Government" in the Record Eagle, a Traverse City, Michigan newspaper. Speaking of NDAs in public business, it was written, quote, "They diametrically oppose our foundation of checks and balances maintained by an informed voting public. Our country is built on the people's right to know. You, the tax mayor, might want to weigh in before a certain company comes to your neighborhood. You may even want to have enough information to debunk outlandish claims, and you may want to voice support."
Thank you. Mr. Fairfax.
Todd Fairfax, 623 Kings Highway. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I know you're probably saying in your mind, but there are proprietary secrets and business competition reasons for NDAs, perhaps, but these are much fewer and farther between than corporations would have you believe, and the need is shorter in duration. Again, by the time a corporation is at a public hearing, it is time for the details to be public, and they are in other localities such as Prince William and Warrenton. Supervisors like yourselves can't vote the will of the people if the people are in the dark and given no voice, and I know that is not what any of you want. A Prince William Times article dated October 2nd of this year entitled "Data Center Secrecy Often Keeps Residents in the Dark" states, "More than other companies, data centers want to maintain site security, hold competition at bay, and protect themselves from demonstrations, and even lawsuits," industry insiders say. But the practice makes it difficult for residents to know what is going to be built next door, to find out who is building it, to complain to a data center that is making problems for the neighborhood, or just to gather basic information. The Hill reported on March 31st this year that a coalition of advocacy groups was launched in the spring. The campaign called "Ban Secret Deals" says that Amazon, Google, and other corporate giants regularly persuade state and local governments into signing NDAs that prevent the public from seeing how much money they are receiving in government subsidies. As you know, the Code of Virginia allows for closed meetings for discussions concerning a prospective business or industry where no previous announcement has been made. Once announcement has been made, then a closed session on the matter is no longer lawful. Once application has been made to the Community Development Office, that application is now public information and represents an announcement, and closed sessions are no longer lawful on that matter. Similarly, any non-disclosure agreement touching any part of that application should be immediately vacated, and any details shared under that NDA should be made public. In this spirit, the board should make a binding action on itself and the county government that no NDA will be signed unless there is a provision in that NDA that upon submission of application to the Community Development Office, all details previously under the NDA are fully disclosed. I know my wife and I have learned much from listening to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fairfax. Anyone else for public comment? All right. Mr. Dines, anyone online for public comment?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody received any emails or correspondence for public comment? Nope. Okay. Then we will close public comment at this point, and I'll open up to reports of members of the board. Mrs. Bender?
Thank you very much. I've got a few items here. I'm going to try to move through these quickly. I want to thank the King George Historical Society, who are back in track with new leadership, and they had a wonderful event, and also our Parks and Rec staff and General Properties on the new decorations that you see down the Route 3. They look really nice, and I want to thank everybody together that did a really good job on the Christmas tree lighting, and Mr. Baird told me they gave out over 300 cups of hot cocoa, and I know especially the kids appreciated that. So, I thank everyone involved in the Christmas tree lighting. This week, we got our final report from HB 206, that committee, state committee I served on, and I sent it to all my colleagues and a couple other members of our staff. It's really informative reading. It's quite a lot of pages to read over, but I think it's a, it was a great committee to serve on, and it's all about solar farms. And we mentioned a lot of the topics some of, some of the audience have mentioned today with the planning process, ordinances, and zoning. I also sent a couple weeks ago a report that I did at VACO showing the different things that we might want to consider our ordinance, zoning, and comp plans, things I picked up during the meetings, talking with developers and citizens' rights groups, and also people that are in the ag industry, forest industry, and a whole bunch of different Department of Energy, all things that maybe localities should look at, or other localities have in their ordinances, in their comp plans, that we maybe need to consider as we are redoing our ordinances zoning. So, just look out for that. I might be mentioning more of those at a later date. We had a meeting with GWRC and FAMPO this week. One of the big things we were talking about was the East-West Mobility Study, which you can find on the FAMPO website, looking at different ways to try to beat the congestion up in the Fredericksburg area that kind of eventually could leak down to our way, and they have quite a few ideas. So, if you want to check it out, it is on the FAMPO website, and it's the East-West Mobility Study for Route 3. One other thing I'll be mentioning a little later, I wanted to find out from my board members, I asked about the landfill committee, and I got a little bit of a status on it. It seems that we do not have enough members that are currently on the board, so I was wondering how you guys felt about that, maybe trying to make sure we get enough members so they can actually have meetings now. I'm not sure exactly how many members are vacant, but it is, I was reached out to the member that is serving the Shiloh District, Elodie, and I wasn't going to reappoint her until I made sure that we were still going to have the committee and that we had enough members to serve on the committee.
We're short three members currently.
Right.
It's my understanding. So.
So, if you guys can, see if you can find some available folks to serve on a committee if anybody would like to be on the landfill committee, please contact your supervisor. So, I think, you know, there's a lot of stuff going on, and we need to make sure we have our committee full. I want to thank Captain Cookman for inviting Mr. Stonehill and I. We attended the lighting on the base. This is last one. It was a nice event. Always great to see, you know, the lights get up, and everybody's very excited, and Santa was there, and the kids were very excited. So, it was a great time. I want to mention All Points Broadband. That was asked today. I had a resident, actually two residents, reach out to me about All Points Broadband. So, I sent an email to the gentleman who was at the Fall Festival, their marketing representative, and I asked him for a timeline, and he said he would have to get back to me because he has to have a higher-up give me the timeline, but I'll be reaching out next week. I gave him two weeks to give me a timeline, and then I will be reaching out again because I know there are a lot of citizens, especially in the Shiloh community, that would not like to know what is the status in the timeline for All Points Broadband. And, Mr. Baird, I can tell you for myself, I'm one of those people that can't get All Points Broadband because of the monopoly of the cable company, and I have basically just the Wi-Fi on my phone. So, I know there are others in my position in this county, and we did pay the money to be first, and I'm still disappointed that we're not first, that we're second or maybe third, and I would like to see some movement on. I know there's supply chain issues, but that's one of the things I'll be checking back with them to see the status. I just want to make sure I got everything covered. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Bender. Mr. Granger?
Sure, thank you. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone who came out. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Stats, again, thank you for coming out and your opinions upon the budget. Definitely something to take into consideration. I agree with you, long-term planning, agree with that. And I would encourage you to continue to come as we do begin the budget season here soon, and all those meetings are obviously open to the public as well, and it's an opportunity to get understanding on what's going on and have your voice be heard. So, I appreciate you coming out. Please continue to come out. And thank you for your input upon the litter collection and the line item that we have and that, so obviously something we can look at and entertain. So, thank you for that. Mr. Baird, I'm not sure what current ISP you have. You said it's been getting worse and worse. I'm going to hazard a guess it's Breeze, Breeze Line? Okay. I apologize, I'm sorry that you're experiencing those situations. My understanding, though, is with the grants that it does require that it goes to, as Ms. Bender said, it would go to those who would not be identified as being served, and in her situation, she's not served, even though they've claimed that they serve her. And I appreciate that you're getting diminished service, and that's frustrating, something, you know, we continue to look at and trying to find our way there. Ms. Slavello, I wasn't sure exactly if you're referring to the All Points Broadband as well. I apologize if I misunderstood, but my understanding is you could go to their website and put in your location to understand if you would meet the service area. I don't think there was any down payment that I'm aware of. I'm not sure if any of my colleagues would know of something, but I'm not aware of any that's engaged in that, but if I misunderstood something, we can, we can connect and discuss. But I started back and forth, but we can connect later, and we can discuss it. So, I apologize if I missed anything, misunderstood something, but we'll connect up and figure it out. And Fairfaxes, Mr. and Ms. Fairfax, thank you for coming out. I appreciate your inputs on our zoning ordinance and continue to come out and provide your voice so that we can consider those situations, and obviously with the Planning Commission as well, as we look to do our zoning ordinance overall. So, thank you for that. Only other thing I have is I'd just like to say thank you to Parks and Rec, General Properties, the King George Historical Society for preparing and setting up and hosting the tree lighting event. It was a great opportunity this past weekend, Sunday, to be out there for that, so it was a fun time, and I appreciate all the work that all those individuals and those organizations put in to make it a good time for the community. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Mrs. Cupca?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, everyone, for coming out this evening. Special thanks to everyone who provided public comment. Mr. Stats, when I was on staff in 2017 and 2018, we actually did a litter, a roadside litter cleanup. We obtained a Keep Virginia Beautiful grant to support it, and we did it in conjunction with waste management, and we did exactly what you suggested. We, I feel like we had hot dogs maybe and a picnic lunch afterwards at the landfill. So, perhaps that's something that we can look at doing again here in the near future. I know Mr. Clark, the Director of Parks and Recreation, also last year organized a park litter cleanup, so obviously that wasn't the road sides, as you stressed, but we have had staff in the past coordinate something like that. I will also tell you, I am on the Rappahannock Regional Jail Board of Directors, and every chance I get, I call the superintendent and ask him for more hours. The jail has a roadside litter cleanup program as well. You may have seen some of the inmates out. And also, I've been in contact with Mr. David Beal, our resident engineer for VDOT, and asked him if he had any additional hours that their department could offer us as well. So, I do understand where you're coming from with regard to the litter, and thank you for your comments with regard to the budget. Mr. Baird, thank you very much for coming out this evening and providing your comments. I, myself, I think eventually I will get service from All Points Broadband because I'm in, I think, in the second wave, the second batch of money that we receive from the second grant. But I would also suggest anyone out there, take a look at T-Mobile Home Internet if you have not already. I, myself, got that service around this time last year. It's $50 a month and extremely reliable, and they're making a focus on rural communities. It's whether they can serve you or not is going to depend on where your house is with regard to the closest tower that they have equipment on. But yeah, if you look for T-Mobile 5G home internet, I've had really great service with that because I'm at least another year out, I would guess. Ms. Slavello, thank you so much for coming out, and I do believe you are correct, there is, I think, a $99 sign-up fee. And again, I signed up, but don't have an update as far as that goes, so I'm glad to hear that Ms. Bender reached out to them and requested another update. And Mrs. Fairfax and Mr. Fairfax, thank you so much again for coming out and remaining engaged. I do have a question for the county attorney with regard to your public comment. The noise ordinance, am I correct, that is, that is an ordinance that the sheriff's office enforces, and that is not actually part of the zoning or the subdivision ordinance, correct?
I'm very certain that the sheriff is the forcing body, and I'm also fairly confident of the second statement, that it's in the general provisions of the county code and not in the zoning ordinance.
Correct. So, I wanted to ask my colleagues if there would be consensus to, I mean, would that be, Ms. Lackey, who would we direct to examine that? Because that is not part of the zoning or subdivision ordinance, so that's not work that the Berkeley Group is doing as part of the ordinance overhaul. So, I want to make sure you guys understand that. That's not, that's a separate ordinance. So, could we ask, could I get consensus?
Ms. Cupca, can I make a comment in regards to that?
Yeah.
So, I did, in the last, last week, when there were two rainy days, I read all the ordinances, and it actually is in the ordinance. It's in the county ordinance, I mean, in the county zoning ordinance. So, there, but I think that it needs to be revisited, that's for sure. But it is in the ordinance, it's just not adequate the way it is set now. The sheriff office does enforce it, even though the ordinance doesn't say that, the zoning ordinance doesn't say it, and the county sheriff enforces that ordinance. There's another provision that allows him to enforce that law, the county code, but I would agree that it needs to be revisited sooner rather than later. This has been a ongoing issue that has never been solved, or, so I agree, Ms. Cupca.
Thank you. Yeah, it's in Chapter 10, Offenses Miscellaneous, Article 1 in General Um, yeah, it's in Chapter 10 offenses miscellaneous, Article One in general, Section 10.8. Um, so I'm not seeing where it's in the subdivision or the zoning ordinance. Uh, but is there consensus from the board to direct appropriate staff to, to revisit that?
Yes.
Is there any guidelines or, um, do you have in mind how we move forward on that?
I don't have any specific ones at this time. I just, I, I think we need to, if we leave it to Ms. Lackey as county attorney perhaps to come up with a working group? Would that work for everyone? Cause I'm sure there are many stakeholders interested in seeing this. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. Um, and then as far as my written report, uh, Friday, November 18th, I attended the YMCA Dodgeball Tournament. I want to thank Chief Moody and the members of his department and family for participating in the tournament. Sunday, December 4th, attended the Christmas tree lighting and thanks to staff and the museum for all of their hard work on that as well as thank you to Department of Parks and Recreation and General Property Staff for, as Ms. Bender previously stated, the decorations, the new decorations on the polls. Uh, and then with that, I have a, a vacancy that I wish to make an appointment. I moved to appoint Ms. June Drake to the Economic Development Authority for the unexpired term that ends on September 30th, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. And in closing, I just want to remind everyone that the Department of Social Services is again hosting a Christmas program to help those in need in our community. Please contact DSS if you would like to help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Cupka. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening and welcome, everyone. First, I'd like to say Merry Christmas to everyone. Have a happy holiday and be safe in this travel season. It's been my pleasure to be on this board for the last year as we move forward with important business of the county. Um, and now to not more popular. So I, as I come out of Fredericksburg a lot lately, as I go down Route Three through Stafford, I see a lot of trash. I also smell a lot of sewage. As I come into King George, I still see the trash and I still smell the sewage. As I continue on down Route Three and turn on 206, I still see the trash, I don't smell the sewage. As I get down to Dalgrin, I see the trash and I smell sewage. Um, so the two things there to take from that comment are, um, I hope that we may be able to look at some of these reasons for the sewage smell, not in Stafford, but in our own county. And secondly, uh, to Anthony's comment, I think that the county is starting to have a litter problem. Next, um, the broadband, you know, it was promised this county would go first and that didn't happen. It seems like that when you're in a local, local county government, that sometimes that, um, that once something is decided, our control no longer exists. I don't know how to solve that problem, but it's definitely on my mind. Fairfax is, it's interesting that you brought up the NDAs because it's on the closed meeting and I hope you'll stand by for some of the discussion that goes on in order to enter into closed meeting on non-disclosure agreements. Again, thank you and thank all the board members and Merry Christmas to you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Collins. I just wanted to say thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight. It's nice to see a nice crowd. Uh, Mr. Stats, with your trash and litter comments, um, Friends of Rappahannock is gonna be doing some cleanup here shortly. You can get ahold of them. They are always looking for volunteers. Um, and, uh, they, they do a lot here in, in the county for trash pickups plus other folks. Uh, but thank you for coming out. Thank you for your concern. It is a big problem, especially we have a big landfill with trash trucks and it's, uh, it's, it's an ongoing issue. Um, and I just wanted to say thanks for everybody. Yes, uh, Breeze Line, uh, internet services is, is really lacking. I mean, mine, mine shuts off four or five times a day. It's, uh, it's bad. Um, I've made some, you know, phone calls about it and they just, they keep saying it's the, the, the wiring or, you know, you need to upgrade your service, but you know, how can something be going, something working very well and all of a sudden it just kind of quits working. So it's, uh, we're kind of stuck with that for now until we, until they figure out about these monopolies. So, um, Fairfax is, thank you for coming. Thank you for all your information like usual. Um, and for my report tonight, uh, November 6th, uh, Mary Washington University and, uh, hosted the comrel. It's the one that we have here. Uh, Mr. Granger and I, uh, attended the, that comrel. It was Captain Copeland's last one that he has. Uh, lots of good information coming out of, um, the, uh, relationship with base and the surrounding areas and, you know, all the folks from Maryland, Colonial Beach, King George, everybody comes together in this whole region, uh, for things out of that. So I just wanted to say thanks for Captain Copeland and Mary Washington for hosting that. Uh, November 20th, Mr. Miner and I cut the ribbon at TJ Maxx. I'm gonna date myself because when I pulled into the parking lot at quarter of eight, there was a line of people from the door at TJ Maxx almost all the way down to Goodwill and it kind of reminded me of buying concert tickets back in the day. I guess, I don't know if they stand in line for concert tickets anymore, but that was a great, uh, that was a great opening. It's a great store. Um, and since the grand opening, TJ Maxx has made its 52-week high. I don't know if that has anything to do with the store being open or my wife being in there. But it's a great business. It's definitely something that we need here in King George, uh, you know, for businesses like that to come help and offset the tax basis. So that's something that's, uh, great and very glad that TJ Maxx is here. Uh, November 30th, as Mrs. Bender said, myself, uh, Mrs. Bender and her sidekick Molly, uh, attended the, um, tree lighting ceremony on base and Captain Copeland is leaving. He and his wife and family are going out to Kansas State. Yeah, um, to be, uh, the CEO of their, um, um, ROTC program out there. So I wish him, um, great luck out there. And then on December 4th, I attended the holiday tree lighting ceremony. I did notice the tree is not lit tonight and I was told that it was a GFI breaker.
Yes.
Uh, due to the rain. So.
Somebody's on the way to.
Yeah, we'll get that reset. So, but yeah, there was a great, um, great ceremony and appreciated all the hard work from everybody, um, in, at staff. Um, and we've been bringing up a lot of trash and, Mrs. Bender, you brought up the, uh, landfill advisory committee. Um, I haven't talked to you yet, Mr. Uh, Collins, about it, but since you had brought it up and everything, we don't have a supervisor, um, body on the landfill advisory committee. I mean, is that something that you might want to, to be on, you know?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I was on the landfill advisory committee for several terms. And the reason why I got off of the landfill committee was because the board made decisions without any, um, reports from the landfill committee. So several on the landfill committee felt that we weren't, we weren't being useful. So I would be on it if in fact it could be useful. In other words, that you, that you hear from the landfill committee on landfill issues before decisions are made instead of.
I mean, is that something, I mean, would the board like to have a board member on that to kind of help facilitate and, and move things along? I mean, Mr. Collins, I mean, would you like to get back on there to see if you can get some drive going on it?
Sure.
Okay. You guys good? Okay.
I'll move to appoint Mr. Collins to the landfill advisory committee.
Second.
All right. We have a motion properly seconded. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Collins. And I think that's it that I have. So we will, I will close up, uh, report some members of the board and move on to the consent agenda.
Move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion properly seconded. Um, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Uh, moving on to county officials' report. Mrs. Gump. I see you have a nice crowd here tonight.
My support team. Good evening, honorable board members, Chairman Stonehill, Mr. Miller, Ms. Lackey. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. We came through another election. Yay. So from the start of this year, um, we started out with our redistricting. Um, we mailed out 19,255 voter cards for our redistricting. Um, from January to November, we had 730 applications. These are new applications of voters. Um, for our in-person voting for, um, November, we had 3,644 voters from September the 16th until November the 5th. Uh, and I wanted to say thank you all for funding the remodel of my office. Um, it worked out perfect. We had six voting stations set up. So the in and out flow was, was, um, really, it, it, it really worked a lot. We mailed out 792 absentee ballots with 698 coming back. Um, we pre-processed the mail ballots three times during the election period. Uh, we cured 21 ballots. 21 ballots were counted the Monday after the election because Friday was a holiday and these were uh, absentee ballots that were postmarked before or on the day of the election. Um, we had 28 pages who had worked with us from the high school, um, during the election. Yeah. So we're really very fortunate that, uh, King George High School, Barbara Anderson, Ms. Strauss, really stresses the, uh, fact of getting the children, the young adults, uh, involved, um, with the election. So the turnout for this election was 10,006, uh, 10,467, which resulted in a 54% turnout. Um, breakdown of that, 23% was in person and absentee voting and 31% was on Election Day. For this November, um, we had a couple of firsts and one of them, uh, this is due to the new laws that were put into place. We had same-day registration. Um, that's a first for us. And with the same-day registration for our in-person and at the polls, we had 68 same-day registration applications. Um, plus the reporting of the way that we had to report the numbers for the central absentee precinct. That was a first. So I would just like to state that the election process, um, is not the registrar's office and it's not the electoral board. It is the workers who dedicate their time and energy, the ones who are on the front lines. Um, we are extremely fortunate in King George County, uh, to have the team of workers that we have. There's a lot of talk out there now and I'm sure that all of you have heard about, um, uh, through the media, about fraud, about, um, the, um, machines telling the wrong numbers, about ballots being misplaced and about election officials not doing their job. I would like to reiterate from previous, um, reports that I have given you, um, that most of my officers of election, I have some who have been with me for over 20 years. Um, the majority of my officers of election have been with me for 15, five to 15 years and just a handful under five years. So with that, um, in itself should speak volumes to the residents of King George County that the elections here in King George are extremely well-run by seasoned workers who are passionate and have the integrity to make sure that everything is done by the book. And as I stated earlier, it's not about my office. My job is to make sure that the officers on the front lines are trained and have the necessary materials that they need to make them successful for the day. Um, and if they don't, then I have failed them and the citizens of King George. Um, and so before I leave, um, I would just like, there's some people that I would like to, to thank. Um, the frontline workers, and I do have some of them here tonight. Um, so, and I think it's extremely important that you as a board see these people, uh, and know the dedication that they have. So, um, I don't have anybody from my courthouse precinct, but in my courthouse precinct, my frontline workers are Jennifer Rollins. Oh, I do. I have Robert Baird, um, and then Scott Kogle. Those are the frontline and meaning frontline are those are the ones that are gonna take the brunt of the people who are coming in. They're the ones that have the manual that has like seven chapters in it, that they have to kind of, um, be trained on to know all of the steps of what they need to do. Um, and that's not saying that the back line isn't just as important. Um, in Paspatanzi, which is Silston, I have Doug Wilson, um, Karen Weingart and Philip Jones. In Monroe, I have my right-hand person, Jen C. Brown, uh, Teresa McMillan, Annette Baines and Frank Deloche. In Dalgrin, I have Ann Lusher, Ann Lusher back here, um, Ben Shows and Walter Baines. And then in Shiloh, I have Connie Norris, Meredith Music, Esther Brown and Floyd Allen. My central absentee precinct is, um, Malia Kennedy, Cindy Sanchez, Jen Wilson and, uh, Jen Vogel. Okay. And then my office workers, Ann Shows and Sheila Finn Cannon and, um, Paula Van Alstine. Um, so not only do I want to thank them, I also want to thank Sheriff Giles's department. Because without him, um, he has provided, um, deputies throughout the day and evening for us. Um, and he's also, um, had let us use the orange cones for Dalgrin and the flashing sign so people would know where to go. Uh, Jimmy and his team with the June and, uh, November elections, they come in, they pick up all of our equipment, they put it in the trailer and then they follow us around helping us to deliver these. Uh, my staff, Jen C., Jen and Laura and Ann Shows. Um, for their support, endurance and patience and strength, especially when being asked the same question over and over and over. And the biggest question that we got for this election, because there was only one person on the ballot for most of the precincts, uh, two, if you were in courthouse in Paspatanzi was, well, what's gonna be on the November ballot? Um, hmm. So, and you just, and, and they made, the ability to adapt and always be on top of things was amazing. My electoral board members, which is Rick Shank, uh, Phyllis Cook, Nancy Lambert, um, for their support and trust in my office and for being available when called and for always believing in the process uh, and knowing that King George County elections are run with the utmost integrity despite whatever their political convictions may be. Um, the backline workers, I have, um, a total of 45 and, and some of those was I just named. But the backline workers are, uh, just as important and they work just as tirelessly as the frontline, making sure that, um, uh, the positions they work in at the polling place are done to the letter of the law. Um, and they work long hours, sometimes 16 to 18 hours for the day and they will always greet you with a smile when you come into the polling place. So as you can see, it's not a one-man show. It is the community of King George County coming together to run the elections. And for that, I thank you and, um, we're getting ready for the next big one, which will be the county election coming up in November 2023. So I'm sure I'll be back here next November telling you the report. So, thank you all and Merry Christmas. Oh, and I forgot. We could not do this without Mr. Lambert as well. I mean, he is like our muscle of helping, helping, um, to, um, um, I mean, he is like our muscle of helping, helping, um, to, um, um, carry a lot of our stuff and always being available as well.
Everybody have any questions for Mrs. Gump? Mr. Collins?
No questions, Ms. Gump. Thank you. Thank you for all the workers of the, the polls. Um, I'm out there every time, seeing what great work you all do. I do hear some of the national political stuff rolling down locally. And I assure everyone that you can say what you want about the national politics, that the King George County, um, election process is very secure and it's on, it's on time. And that, um, don't bother to waste your time arguing with me about it, cuz I know what the facts are. And so I dispel any, any rumors that ever exist in our local politics. So thank you for the work you do. Nice seeing y'all. I'll see you all in November.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Ms. Gump, I just wanted to say thank you, and thank you for your whole crew. Uh, your office is, looks very good. I was there for a while, watching some people come and go, and it's a whole lot smoother coming and going. Uh, y'all did a great job in, in designing and fixing all that up. And I just wanted to say thank you to, to all your frontline workers, um, and who I always see down in Dahlgren with me. Uh, thank you as, as well. And, uh, while you're still right there, uh, you did bring up the Lamberts. And I hear that Mrs. Lambert is leaving, um, after many, many years of service. So Nancy Lambert, I have a resolution from King George County in recognition of all your hard work. So, um, whereas the King George County Board of Supervisors wishes to recognize with exemplary public service and leadership of Mrs. Nancy Lambert during her years of service on the Electoral Board, and whereas Mrs. Lambert's commitment to King George community was demonstrated by her capable service beginning February two thousand fourteen as a board member on the King George County Electoral Board, and whereas during that period, Mrs. Lambert, uh, provided the registrar's office and the Electoral Board with outstanding dedication and commitment regarding the electoral process, and whereas Mrs. Lambert's integrity and commitment to the duties of an Electoral Board member contributed to the fairness of the election process. Therefore, or now, therefore be resolved that the King George County Board of Supervisors on this day, on the sixth day of December, that hereby recognize and extend appreciation to Mrs. Nancy Lambert for her service to the King George County Electoral Board during the period of February twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion. I guess everybody was all in favor of approving that motion.
Mr. Chair, would you like to take a picture?
Yeah, we made the motion, and just, just to make sure it's proper, we had a motion properly seconded, and any discussion was none, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Votes aye, so yes, it does pass, and I thought, all the clapping, yes, I understand. Yeah. Okay, with all that, uh, report from the county attorney, Mrs. Lackey.
In your agenda packets, there is a proposed deed of correction. This is, uh, for a deed of subdivision that was reported for Oakwood Estates, Section Four, um, in the May-June timeframe. Um, after the recordation of the subdivision plat, the GIS team, um, in, looked at the, the plat in further detail and found that there were some technical errors. So this is a, an approval request to have a deed of correction to re-record a subdivision plat that corrects those technical errors.
I move to approve the deed of correction for Oakwood Estates, Section Four subdivision, as presented.
I will second, but I have a question and discussion.
All right, we have a motion, uh, properly seconded and discussion?
I just wanted to clarify for those that might have come later or online, what you had mentioned, Ms. Lackey, in the service authority meeting, about why this is, what, what are the changes?
So there's a number of technical changes. Um, the probably, to my mind, the most significant is that there is a right-of-way boundary adjustment, um, that there was a, there, it wasn't quite correct, and that was caught by our, um, GIS team. And so that's one of the things that is being, being corrected.
Thank you for the clarification for the public.
All right, we have motion properly seconded, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. All right, next, uh, moving on to presentations, uh, presentation by the Thurman Brisbane Center.
My wife is gonna pass out some folders I made for y'all. My name is Paul Stanton, uh, one-five-one-four-four Popnek Road. I'm, uh, the vice chair of the, um, board of directors for the Thurman Brisbane Center.
Thank you.
And, uh, uh, thank you. First, I'd like to thank Chris for setting all this up and being such a professional and getting it done. We're most of all very thankful to this board for the support that you gave us last year. I know we had, we had an event at our house, and Kathy came, and, um, Ms. Bender came. And, uh, we very much appreciate the support, but among all the, the counties who support and plan these sixteen, King George is really a standout. Maybe not in terms of the dollar amount, but in terms of the size of the county and the amount of service we provide to this county, he really stepped up and, and, uh, really outshined the other, the other counties in the area. So we really appreciate that, and are very thankful for that. I've tailored the, um, the briefing a little bit this evening because, uh, there's some confusion and some things going on that affect, may affect our funding. I know that, um, Ms. Cupka and Ms. Bender are on the GWRC. I don't know how much they know about, um, the hostility between the Fredericksburg Regional COC and us, but its significance been going on for a lot of years. The COC went to one of the other jurisdictions and had a large portion of our support redirected to themselves, uh, without the knowledge of the board, and, um, we were unable to undo that. And, uh, just recently, I don't know if you've all received a recent letter from the COC giving us a grade. They've taken it upon themselves to, uh, to evaluate us, and again, it's not a, really a fair evaluation. We're, we're, we're not held to their standards by any means, and I'll make that clear in the briefing why that is. So what, you know, that's the backdrop of the briefing. Our CEO was here just a few months ago to brief you all, so I'm not gonna cover all that same stuff again. I think you're pretty much familiar with the center and how it does business, but I'll cover mainly the differences between us and, uh, and the, uh, the other approach, the HUD approach. What am I not doing here? Yeah. There we go. Yeah, I got it. All right, so dealing with homeless. Homeless is a, is a very complicated problem, and if you watch the news at all, you know it's getting out of control in the United States. And, uh, the, the program that most places have adopted is called, uh, that HUD has established is called Housing First. And, um, it's a very difficult problem. Homeless people are very different. Sometimes it's someone with a serious substance abuse problem or a serious mental illness. Uh, sometimes it's somebody who just something bad happened to. About only twenty percent of the, of the homeless people in the country are chronically homeless. The rest are people just something bad happened to. And we'll cover some of that. And in that folder I gave you, there's a story of a King George family that recently visited our center, and we managed to help, uh, the, the family and their four children, uh, get back on their feet again. And I asked him to come this evening. He did testify, um, before one of the other boards, uh, but he, he's at work, so he couldn't come. So we're thankful that he's at work. That's a good thing. Okay. Option number one is get them off the streets. That's the, that's the, uh, the preferred, by the state and federal government, that's the preferred way of dealing with, just get them off the street. It's what HUD, uh, DHCD, and the Fredericksburg COC all, uh, stand behind. That's their program. They provide financial incentives to the landlords, um, so they, they can be housed in apartments, uh, hotels, whatever is available. And it's called Housing First. That's the program. Okay, uh, this quote is from their website, so you know. Housing First does not mandate participation in services either before obtaining housing or in order to retain housing. Supportive services are offered to support people with housing instability and individual well-being, but participation is not required. So what that means in effect is the taxpayers will pay all or part of someone's, uh, who's homeless of their housing, and there's no accountability on their part. They need not do anything, uh, on their own to help their own situation. So there's no accountability, and they end up being, you know, dependent upon the government, which we don't think is a good solution, but that's the solution. And it is one of the viable options, and it's a very, and it's very, very active, and a lot of money is spent on, billions and billions of dollars. But as homeless populations continue to swell, and they, and the homelessness spills over into their suburbs, uh, bringing crime, um, some places have just given up on processing people for, for committing crimes. It's so bad. And anyway, it's reasonable to question their effectiveness. They've been in, in place since twenty fifteen, and things have gotten considerably worse since then. So the difficulty is, it's a fine line between being compassionate with someone, which we certainly try to be, and give them love, cuz a lot of them have never had love in their lives, and, and also enabling bad behavior. So it's a, it's a tough call, and usually it's dependent upon the individual and some judgment on the providers. Okay, our, the Brisbane Center's approach is different, uh, considerably different. Uh, we, we believe in transforming people. Now, not everybody's amenable to this. There are some people that don't care. Um, those, a lot of those guys you see on the street, uh, with their hand out, they wanna be there. You know, and there's no, you can't force people to go into a homeless shelter. They won't go. They don't wanna go. And some people are not suitable for our shelter, and I'll talk about those, those things. But we wanna transform them. So we safely, safely intake them. That means they're screened, um, and, and we shelter them. And we give them a warm, nice place to stay. We give them good food, and we give them care. Uh, we require them to participate, and, and this is our major difference with Housing First. We require them to participate in all the services that are available to them, to, to get them out of homelessness, to make them more sellable to an employer and that kind of thing. Sometimes it's simple things like health. Uh, a lot of them have health issues. There are other ways to deal with those things. Mental issues, there are ways to, ways to deal with those things. So we, we make sure that they have, they have to do that. So, um, to us, our return on investment is productive citizens. And that's you, that story you see about the, the family, um, Doug and Elise there, that's their story. That's what happened to them. And I'm gonna show a video. I'll appreciate you standing around with the videos we're seeing. At the end of this, I'll show you a video that also shows how we work. Uh, here's what we teach. We teach financial management. I do that personally, um, teach them about budgeting and saving money, basics of renting, healthy parenting, nutrition and cooking, and much more. We have a lot of fa- uh, families, single family, uh, and sometimes mother and father too, so. We, they need, they need to be taught. They need to be taught simple things that most of us take for granted. We require a code of conduct. We give that to them when they arrive. We have a whole bunch of people living in a, in a single facility. That's not true of the other shelters. And we need to live together, and so we have to have rules, and we do. And if they violate them, some things, they'll be discharged. We just can't tolerate certain things. Um, we do physical health and screening and referrals. Uh, Germana, uh, Nursing School, for example, comes up free of charge and, and supports us. We get tons of people help us. Many, many individuals and scores of, of community organizations support us. We're very, very community-oriented. Uh, they do housekeeping. They have chores. That's how we maintain the, uh, the cleanliness of the facility. If you come visit us, we'd love to have you come visit us, by the way. Um, it's a very clean facility, very nice facility. Um, we have internal and external programs for sobriety for people that have drug and alcohol abuse issues. We do support and get referrals for mental health. This is one of our biggest shortfalls as a community, not just Brisbane Center. I mean, we don't have any of that in-house. So it's just in the community. We really need more. Uh, there are a lot more mental issues, problems causing homelessness than many other things. And we help them with jobs. We have people come in that are mentors, that are experts in, uh, in writing resumes and getting hired and things like that. How to dress, what to talk about, how to put, to put in your resume. We help them with all those things. Okay, at intake, uh, we screen them for safety prior to entry. Couple weeks ago, we screened a guy who wanted to come into the shelter. He was a convicted murderer. He didn't make it. You know, sex offenders don't make it. We can't have those kind of people alongside families and children. Uh, and frankly, this is the one thing the COC doesn't seem to understand. They can't figure it. We, we can't do that. They want us to be a low-barrier shelter and let anyone in, and we just can't do that. And actually, in our, in our, uh, operating permit from the city, it says we cannot do that. So we're really not, it's not, it's not our mission, and it's not, also not legal for us to do it. Uh, families, women, and children must feel safe and be safe. And, uh, we have rules. We have people come to the door who are qualified to come in and need a place to stay, and when they read the rules, they go, nope. I'd rather go to a hotel funded by the taxpayers, where I can drink all I want and whatever, do whatever I want. So we have rules. Believe it or not, and this is, you know, I was, I was in the Navy for thirty years. Saw a lot of young people come in who had, they'd had rules, but they'd never been held accountable to those rules. They were just kind of living free and doing whatever they wanted and breaking laws, and, uh, took some pride in it, in fact. And they come in to the military, and it takes a little bit of adjustment, but not a lot. But one thing I discovered was that these people don't mind having rules. They actually like having some structure in their lives. It makes their lives much more sa- more straightforward, I guess, is a way to say it. I remember, uh, many years ago, twenty-some years ago, I was listening to a radio program, and, and it was Veterans Day, and some old guy like me came on, he goes, you know, these kids today, they got nothing to worry about. There's no war. The economy's good. I don't know what they're all complaining about. And right after that call, a young man called in, he said, you have any idea what it's like to grow up, not know what right and wrong is? Everything's okay. You have any idea what that's like? And I thought about that. That's very profound, and I think that's one of the things, the accountability that we require of these people is something that is very good for them. It may be the thing that they need most. We have case managers, so when they come in, they get a case manager. The case manager sits down with the, uh, the client, and they come up with a plan. You know, what is this, what is this individual good at? What can we expand on? Where are their shortfalls? How could, how can we cover those? What can we fix? So they come up with a, a plan for the time that they're at the shelter. And they're required to execute that plan. As part of their, you know, agreement to stay is that they work on themselves. So we just, the case managers do that, and then we also have, uh, mobility mentors. And these are individuals, I'm one of them, uh, individuals who follow them after they leave the shelter to make sure they're successful. This program is, uh, uh, from empath and, and, uh, working with Harvard University. Um, and they came out, cuz they were finding out, uh, despite all the money being spent on homelessness, people were not getting out of homelessness. You know, they spend it, and they'd go to, well, like, hotel for six months, and then they get out, and they're the same person they were when they went in. So we follow, and we make sure that, that, that the things that they set up in their plan are being executed, cuz they're not always, not as completed when they leave the shelter. Okay, uh, we've been accused of cherry-picking our clients. So again, we've got men, women, children, families, all in our shelter. So if we don't intake registered sex offenders, it's cherry-picking. We cherry-pick. Same with the mentally ill. We cherry-pick. And pieces of the, people that are violent, have violent, uh, records, like this, uh, convicted murderer, we're not gonna accept them in this shelter. It's just too dangerous. We don't have security in the shelter. Our security is the Fredericksburg Police Department. We don't have security in the shelter. Our security is the Fredericksburg Police Department. So pretty important that we were careful about who we bring in. So we do intake and provide shelter for transformative service for persons assessed by SAFE, by our team of experienced, well-trained, multidisciplinary staff. These are people with lots of experts. They've got master's degrees. They're really good at what they do. Okay, so capability. This is the bridge. What are they capable of? What are their shortfalls? Motivation. Do they aspire to shape their future? If they don't, we try to motivate them to do that. We want people who want to get better. Because if they're not, we're wasting our time and wasting your money, the taxpayers' money. Accountability. We hold them they're measurably work to achieve their full potential. Whatever they're capable of doing, we want them to do it. Appropriate care. We provide the right mixture of supports for adults and children from their dependence to achieve their full human potential in order to be able to live on their own. And continue to progress. And stewarding. We're very good. We're very sharp with our money. We're very close with our money. We don't waste it. And I'll show you an example of that in a minute. So this is the bridge. So the first thing on there is financial literacy. Most of people are homeless because they don't have the money, right? So that's a very important, that they become literate about their money. We talk about credit cards and things like that. Case management, mobility mentoring. We motivate them. They need health. For example, one of the guys I'm mentoring has had two strokes. It's difficult for him to do anything, but we're working with him. The community is very engaged in everything we do. We appreciate that. So anyway, the impact is they get a livable income. They get sustainable rehousing. And they don't come back to the shelter. The returns at shelters, Chris? Nine percent, nine percent. Pretty good. Okay, the different, this is an important slide. Not that the others weren't. These are the four main shelters in Fredericksburg, in the planning of sixteen. MICA and Powerhouse, Hope House, and us. So MICA does single adults, chronic homeless. Again, that's twenty percent of the homeless population. But they're the ones who go without any restrictions into some sort of housing. And Powerhouse is for victims of domestic violence. Hope House does families with children, like we do. And we do families with children and single men and women as well. Because of the HUD requirements, sobriety is not required for any of the three. It is for us. Mental health, participating in service is not required for any of those. It is for us. Employment and job coaching, not required for any others. It is for us. And intake, the other three are low barriers because that's what they're required to be to get their HUD funding. And we cannot do that. We cannot. We will not. Okay, so just the way it is. It's a fact. So both approaches play a role and we're not trying to denigrate the other. Believe me, we're not trying to denigrate what they do. It's just we work alongside each other. We have different roles. And we both support the ultimate goal of dealing with homelessness. So the COC. It's under the GWRC and I know two of you are board members. GWRC was established by HUD to coordinate allocation of millions of dollars of PD-16 federal and state grants. Which we get none of. And the COC recently asserted it has a role in determining funding for TBC. I explained that at the opening. Have any of you seen that letter that they sent yet about us? So anyway, when you get it, hopefully you'll have a large grain of salt when you take it, read it. Just remember our relationship with them. So anyway, we're an independent 501(c)(3). We're not under the COC. We're not under HUD. And we operate directly with the jurisdictions like yourselves. And that's the way we'd like to keep it. And if you're unhappy with what we're doing, let us know. We're dependent upon the jurisdictions for twenty percent of our funding, but we have to fundraise the rest. And now this year in particular, and I think next year is going to be worse, fundraising is very difficult, as you can imagine. So the portion we get from you guys is extremely important to us to continue operating. We currently have a pretty good shortfall this year, so we're working hard on that. Okay. How many people are served? This is over six fiscal years. Only twenty-one from King George. Which is good. And you can see some of the others are very large. And the total of bed days, that's the metric that the COC likes to use for their facilities because they can't I don't know what other metric they would use, but as many people as they can into their shelters, into their housing. So pre-COVID, we averaged five hundred and seventy-eight people a year. This is the facility. You see seventy percent of the roof is covered with donated solar panels. And they're maintained by the company that donate them. And we have zero electric bill. We also, interestingly enough, have zero food budget. Every single meal is donated by someone in the community, some group, some, anyway, they do a great job. And so we don't have to spend any money on food. And we have no problem getting good food to our clients. Sixteen thousand three hundred square foot facility next to Brayhead Farm and Battlefield Industrial Park. We have eight family units with thirty-two beds. We have a dorm with twenty beds for single females and another dorm for single males with twenty-eight beds. So it's a safe, modern, energy-efficient facility. We still have COVID restrictions. This is another thing the COC can't seem to figure out. We do have eighty beds. But we can't possibly fill them because we have to have two family units set aside for quarantine. And we still, we still screen adults as they come in the door. This is not our personal choice. This is recommendation of the Virginia Department of Health, OSHA, and CDC. So we're down to currently about sixty-two is the max we can have. So let's talk ROI. What's our, what do you get? Okay, the average monthly income when they come into the shelter is six hundred and twenty-one dollars. And exit, it's eleven hundred and eighteen, eleven hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty percent increase. Think five hundred bucks, what's that? Well, that's a lot to these people. That's maybe sharing a rent with somebody else and being able to live. And average wage. First, I had a question. What's the difference between wages? Well, monthly income includes benefits that are received. So this is just wages. Go from four twenty to eleven twenty-three, a hundred and sixty-seven percent increase. And then the rest is about connecting people to the services that are available, which is very important. We're not the Lone Ranger here. So people need help and we get them help. So we get them connected to the right place. So eighty, ninety percent to all clients. Two hundred percent increase to VA. Physical health stuff, two hundred and twenty-two percent, seven one increase to mental health. Et cetera. So I don't need to read them to you. But anyway, we're doing good. We're getting people connected and improving their situation as far as homelessness goes. We have lots of stuff for kids. We have nature club. Lots of family activities. My wife Alice runs a lot of this stuff for kids. She used to run the recreation department on the base of Doggering. So now she's she shifted to the homeless shelter and she does an awful lot there. And she loves the kids. Lots of activities for kids. In fact, our last Christmas, for example, we had giant trash bags full of wrapped gifts for each child. It was ridiculous. It was almost, it was too much. But people are very, very generous with us. So that's typically what we get from the community. So volunteers prepare and serve fresh, healthy meals every day, three times a day. The heart of Brisbane, two thousand community volunteers and scores of community partners support our clients with caring and generosity. We generally try to show love to these people because a lot of them have never seen it. So we care for them. For example, our staff, I was walking out the other day and a lady was walking, one of our clients was walking out the front door and the front desk yelled at her, hey, good luck on your GED today. So they knew she was going out to get a GED and they will congratulate her when she gets it. Everybody on the staff is aware of what's going on with the clients. And we root for them, you know, we stand up for them. So the big difference between us and the other approaches is accountability. We think it may be the key to their success and it may be the the one thing that they never had. They needed to be held accountable and then they did fine. So that's it. Okay, the video. This is a video of Tony Lewis' story. And it really tells our story, how we do business pretty well. It's only a minute and a half.
Hi, I'm Tony Lewis and this is my story.
An absolutely true story. And Tony is on our board of directors, serves with me. The only thing untrue about that is when he walked out of the hotel room at the beginning with his mother, he actually was his mother and his five brothers and sisters. We're all living in that hotel room together, so. So he did well. He went on basketball, he went on to play Division One basketball with Loyola and got his, he's a teacher in Fredericksburg now. Just waiting for a principalship to open up. And he's a teacher mentor and just a great guy, great guy. So that's the Brisbane story. He's the personification of it. We have many more. But I thank you for your time. And are there any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you so much for coming out and providing the brief. Just going back, going through, you were talking about cherry picking. And so I was just trying to get some clarification. If not in taking persons with recent violent criminal histories, we cherry pick. So it says recent. Is there some kind of limit or some point where you're like, hey, someone's shown that they may be reformed and
Yeah, it's not a hard and fast rule. It's a judgment call.
Okay. Okay.
We try not to be too rigid.
I understand the concerns, but I'm just kind of curious to understand how that would play out. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
One thing, I would have never had anything to do with homeless stuff. I didn't really care for homeless shelters. And my wife has been volunteering at this one for many, many years. And when I heard that they were trying to fix people, I said, okay, I'd like to be part of that. And that was what attracted me to the board. You know, it really humbles you to hear what people have had to live through, things that we don't we just take for granted. I had two parents who loved me and encouraged me. Most people didn't have any of that. So anyway, any other questions?
Mr. Collins?
Hang on, sir.
So I was curious in my drives around Fredericksburg, how do people get there? In other words, how do they, how do you invite them in or do they come with? Usually on their own or do you go and see them?
They usually do. There's a number of hotlines that they can call and get referred to us. And then we go through the screening process. Or they, sometimes they walk up to the front door and then we can't just walk, let them walk in the front door because we don't know who they are. But we'll refer, we'll tell them where to go and to get screened and we'll start that process. Yeah, we want to, we have room for people right now. We can't get people to come in sometimes.
You do, you go out there on the corner or wherever they're located and tell me about that.
Well, we do that kind of, not as part of a program. I mean, my wife is famous for that. Give them a card and say, here, call this. And we'll take, help you help. But a lot of them just don't, they aren't interested in doing that.
Thank you.
Just wanted to say thank you for coming out. You guys do great work. I've had in my old career and had a lot of experience with you and actually have had a lot of folks here in King George have gone up to you and travelers. Mr. Collins, in other ways that, you know, back in the day, we would transport people that were homeless from the county in a cruiser and take it up, take them up to the Brisbane Center. We were allowed to do that. And, you know, for either King George residents or folks that were kicked out of hotels or wherever, it just had, they needed a roof over their head. So I certainly appreciate for all, all the work that you all do. It's much needed for the folks that want to be there, like you said. So I just, again, thank you for everything and keep up all y'all's hard work. All right, thank you. All right, up next, Mr. Minor, Young Entrepreneur Program.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, members of the board. Tonight, I'm going to give a brief presentation on the Young Entrepreneurs Program that my department applied for Go Virginia funding for. So just going to give a brief overview of the Go Virginia program. This is a DHCD. Essentially a division of DHCD that utilizes state funding to stand up economic development as well as workforce development entrepreneurship programs. Each program or grant request requires one or two, I'm sorry, at least two localities support and active participation in. King George currently, is currently in the Region Six program. Which includes the Fredericksburg, Northern Neck and Middle Penn regions there. Your map is on the bottom right-hand corner. Our current administrator is Ian Ginger, along with Sarah Oldaker. Hope I said her last name correctly. So the Young Entrepreneurs Program, my department is applying for a nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollar grant to go towards development of the program. This program will be intertwined with the school system. King George County High School currently has an entrepreneurship club. And what they're looking to do is to eventually turn that into a curriculum. And we're going to use the Go Virginia funding to bolster that program. Everything that's coming from the county is all INCON match. There is no cash required in order to get this funding. So I've also received several letters of support from regional organizations, as well as some private companies that list theirs at the bottom. The EDA provided the letter of support, also a cash match of fifteen hundred dollars that will go towards a pitch competition if we are awarded the grant and it's executed. Obviously, the Chamber, the Alliance, Northern Neck Co-op, GQ, Rappahanna Community College, Colonial Beach, George Mason, George Mason's University Center for Regional Analysis. So participating school system is obviously King George County High School, Gloucester County, Colonial Beach High School. Actually, let me know about a week ago that they would like to stand up a pilot program as well. The consultants helping us stand this program up. It's actually their program. But it will have obviously some local flavor to what they do as it will be tailored to each community's individual needs. I've already given you, given the board a quick overview. So this is the current amount here. This is for a planning grant or enhanced capacity building grant. So we are requesting nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand. The INCON is at about eighty-eight thousand seven hundred. So we're almost at a one-to-one match for this grant, which only requires two to one. So the deliverables, we intend to have a pitch competition for each participating pilot. So in these three high schools here, a resource guide will be provided. Establish a mentorships between the students and entrepreneurs. Launch at least one new business venture. A development of a feasible high school entrepreneurship curriculum that each of the pilot programs can hopefully implement. So program expansion and implementation. So in the previous slide, I'd laid out that you can apply for two types of grants through Go Virginia. That's an implementation grant and a planning grant. This initial phase is the planning grant with hopes to go to an implementation grant. This initial phase is the planning grant with hopes to go to an implementation grant. Implementation grant, you can, you can ask for, or you can apply for more funding in order to implement it. And that implementation grant could be used for additional things that the schools, in this case, would need in order to stand this program up as a solid curriculum through the school system, well, in the high school, I should say. So and that additional funding can include instructors and other equipment that the high schools would deem appropriate in order to stand up. But that's the end of the presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Minor? Bender?
Thank you. Question on the, so this would eventually, if this all is successful, it would have to be something that would be included in the school's budget because they would need new teachers, correct?
Not exactly. That's what the implementation grant is for. The implementation grant would pay for those new, those new instructors.
But as with any grant, it eventually runs out, so.
Absolutely, right.
So that would have to be factored in, correct? Because this would be a recurring cost.
Correct.
And then my last, just to understand, so way back in the day, in my high school, we had something sort of like this, where we had a class where they taught you different skills to try to show you how to run a business if you wanted to in the future. But this would actually create a business, correct?
Exactly. And so what we're going to try to do is target industries that are specific to King George County and the Go Virginia and our Region Six. So we have a list of industries that, that are identified in the Go Virginia Region's Growth and Diversification Plan that we're going to try to target. We can't, you know, we can't force somebody to pick the industry that's specifically within there, but we're going to encourage that and also highlight the opportunities that currently exist in the community.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Minor? Being done. All right. Thank you, sir, for the presentation.
Yep, thank you.
All right, moving along, something that's near and dear to my heart, a resolution for Northern Neck Ginger Ale. Does Cupco, you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank you first off for placing this on the agenda to be heard this evening. So about a month ago, I was contacted by a couple of constituents, Ms. Savannah Carabin, who is here this evening, thank you for coming out, and Ms. Stephanie Johnson, who is a King George native and resident. And Ms. Johnson actually created the Save Northern Neck Ginger Ale Facebook group and has thousands of followers. I will admit, and I told them when I met with them that evening, that I was skeptical that there was anything that I could do to help them going into the meeting. But at the end of the meeting, it occurred to me that this is something that we could do, we could bring this forward. So we have a resolution of support for the Save Northern Neck Ginger Ale Group dedicated to saving a Northern Neck cultural icon. And so we'd be the first locality to adopt this resolution. And then if adopted this evening, it would be a model that they, that this group could share with other localities in an effort to try to rally support among the Northern Neck localities with the goal, hopefully, of attracting attention and possible investors to make an offer to the Coca-Cola Company to acquire the recipe and the rights to produce the beverage. Is, so we realize they, they've been pretty firm, have not intended to reinstitute it, but perhaps there's an opportunity here to get another group able to come forward and acquire it. So that's the spirit of the resolution this evening, and I'd ask for the board's consideration. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Board?
I'll make a motion to, for the resolution of support for the Save Northern Neck Ginger Ale Group dedicated to saving a Northern Neck cultural icon.
Second.
All right, we have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing done, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair, both aye, motion passes.
And, Mr. Chair, would you indulge and allow a photograph?
Absolutely. Just to say, welcome back to Ms. Carabin and her new family-to-be. Welcome back to the area. Anybody want to come down, Mr. Collins? Stand up back here.
All go down.
All right. Moving along to discussion items, 12:05, previous transfer of convenience center operations. Mr. Miller?
So at the last meeting, Mr. Collins had asked that we discuss the, the fact that, you know, since we've taken over the convenience centers, that there was obviously an escalation in costs. And we wanted to go ahead and put this on the agenda, talk about it, because I think there's a, a lot of history behind it and, you know, why the Seventeenth Amendment was, was put together and then, you know, where we are right now and perhaps, you know, why some of the costs have been escalating in a sense. And so we wanted to go ahead and put this on here. I will tell you this, Mr. Collins and my staff met on Friday. He had some questions about the financial part of it and then, and had a good conversation. But Mike Newchuck, our director of the landfill and solid waste is here. And Ms. Hahn is in the back as well, you can try to hide. She is available to talk about that. And then, of course, Ms. Lackey can also talk about kind of the legal part of it. I just think it's a good, good opportunity. We're in the business of operating convenience centers, and there is going to obviously be continued increases in costs, especially in a market that's kind of a little crazy in terms of inflationary impacts. And so I think it's just something that we, we want to talk about and, you know, I think is especially kind of apropos, because Ms. Hahn sent out the, to all the departments to put together their budgets. And so Mr. Newcheck will obviously be starting to put together his budget for the, for the department, and it'll include convenience center expenses as well. So, Mike, you want to go ahead?
Absolutely. So the Seventeenth Amendment to the original host agreement is what we're going to be dealing with today. That amendment transferred responsibility for operating the county's convenience centers from Waste Management to King George County, effective November 5th, 2018. Administration felt that due to a high volume of compliance, the action was necessary. It was stated this would result in a cost savings to the county, but several factors caused this to be incorrect. The projected cost of salaries and operations was fixed at $298,044 per year. This total and presumed cost savings did not account for the cost of secondary services, such as brush grinding, refrigerant processing, and tire processing. Escalating employee and contractor costs, and those costs associated with the acquisition, replacement, repair, and maintenance of roll-off containers, equipment, and infrastructure will also not be calculated into the presumed cost of yearly operations. In 2021, Waste Management's corporate office reviewed the Seventeenth Amendment and discovered the language was, the county shall be solely responsible to man, operate, and maintain and provide all necessary equipment and services for each of the recycling and convenience centers. So effective July 2021, Waste Management ceased providing brush grinding, refrigerant, and tire processing, and also compactor and infrastructure maintenance. On a positive note, the county no longer outsources refrigerate reclamation. That's now reclaimed by county personnel and recycling and compliance with Clean Air Act, and we maintain all of that documentation. Scrap metal, battery, and oil recycling proceeds will total approximately $40,000 this calendar year and will offset some increased costs. Citizen complaints are far lower than in the past. My cell phone number is available on the county's website. Citizens can call, ask questions, express concern seven days a week. Our facilities are better staffed in the past, one attendant was the norm, and if that person was occupied, decauc does not be checked and it cannot be verified. Citizens were using the center safely. Facilities are cleaner. Tire and refrigerant drop-off areas are no longer allowed to be overfilled. And kind of touched on earlier, we actually have two partner events with Friends of the Rappahannock, February 25th and March 25th. They'll have volunteers out with county personnel, and we'll be litter picking the stretch of Route Three right there from the county line in towards the facility. And now that the county operates the convenience centers, any deficiencies can be promptly addressed because of a direct line of control and management. Now, the proposed Twenty-First Amendment under negotiation and subject to ultimate approval by the Board of Supervisors is intended to negotiate changes to the reimbursement amount and will likely result in the expansion of the Perkins Corner Convenience Center. The proposed expansion would be provided by Waste Management at no cost to the county. New compactors, three-phase power should reduce equipment failures at that location and lessen ongoing maintenance costs. The current agreement, as amended, requires a third convenience center site rather than expansion of existing one. And I don't know if it has been touched on, but back in May of 2019, there had been a board approval with the Board of Supervisors authorizing county staff and attorney to renegotiate the host agreement with the intent of expanding the Perkins Corner Convenience Center and absolving Waste Management of the requirement to build an additional facility. As requested, Ms. Hahn had provided some of the yearly operating expenses, capital expenditures. Now, you also notice in January of this year is when we began hauling our own containers. So you have that truck driver position and also our hours, you know, they had been lessened during COVID. But in November of last year, the Perkins facility reopened on Sunday, hours were extended at Sealsen, so that resulted in an additional 1,173 staffed hours per year, in addition to the truck driver position and the reserve driver position. Mr. Chair, Board members, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Newchuck?
I do not on this, but I have a matter concerning landfill at the end when we're done with the discussion.
Any questions, Mr. Collins?
Questions for him, but I do want to enter into discussion regards to this.
Okay. Thank you, sir, for your presentation. So.
Mr. Collins, can I entertain, since, so he's still up there with what I was concerned, and this is something that came from the HB 206 is, this is concerning solar panels. And then, and I wanted to ask the board, and I waited till now to bring it up, if we wanted to look at, some other localities have been restricting allowing solar panels to come to a landfill. And so it's something that I think we probably should look at, because if we're the only ones left, where are they going to go when they are decommissioning? So I was just going to ask if the board would like our staff to proceed to, to check into that, to see if we could even disallow or ban or restrict solar panels or wind turbines for coming to our landfill.
Have we seen any solar panels come in yet?
No, we haven't taken them yet. So for special wastes like this, each case has got to be evaluated by Waste Management's Special Waste Department. With solar panels, you could be dealing with cadmium, copper, selenium, arsenic. It depends on the older panels, the newer panels, what you're going to face. So as it is right now, you know, we're not a hazardous waste facility. That's not what we're permitted for. So each case would come in, Paolo Roma would be the Waste Management point of contact, and it would be evaluated. But we haven't, we haven't taken them in any numbers, other than maybe a household panel here and there that's slipped in.
So we want to have staff look into what it would?
Is it possible, or, you know, the?
Mr. Chair? According to the agreement with Waste Management, they are not hazardous materials. And then all those things need to be reviewed, so I'm not sure, they already saying no. And there's nothing in any of the contractual stuff that I read that would allow them to say yes. Is that a correct statement?
Yeah. Once again, it would have to be, I'd have to know exactly what we're talking about. Now, we're not a permitted hazardous waste facility. So the first thing, we've got to be in accordance with the, the actual permit that's held by Waste Management through DEQ. Now, if somebody like, let's say they decommissioned a solar farm, and then they came to Waste Management and they presented it, then they would have to go through their solid waste, their special waste department, excuse me. It would have to be evaluated. What does it contain? Is it in accord with the permit? If it's hazardous, then?
So, Mr. Collins, my concern is, I mean, the landfill, when Waste Management leaves in a certain amount of time, 20 years or so, the land will be King George. It will be for the residents of King George, whatever happens to it. If it becomes Mount Trashmore, it becomes a park like in Munich that they make the Olympic Stadium at, whatever it becomes, it's going to be King George, and the citizens have to deal with the impact. So I want to make sure that we're protecting our citizens, especially, you know, to make sure that Waste Management maybe thinks about not taking these in and affecting our citizens is where I'm coming from, and it's something to look at.
So when Waste Management, when they have their permit reviews, would, if they decided they wanted to take this hazardous material, should they have to go through a permitting review first? And they would have, ultimately, it would have to, since it's our property, it would have to go through us. Is that a correct statement?
Well, keep, keep in mind, if it, if it was a hazardous material, there would be more than that, there would have to be DEQ involved. And I don't, I don't know about a waiver of, you know, keep in mind, the way the landfill is built for that facility, it has to literally start underground. So the, the Special Waste Department, first and foremost, is going to look to make sure that they don't take anything that's in violation of the operating permit.
Well, I guess the question is, if they, if they decided they wanted to change that permit, how would that work?
Yeah. And that would be, certainly, the county would be involved, the DEQ would be involved, there would be public notices. It would be a fairly substantial process, but I'm not sure that there, there could be the changes necessarily made to the facility as it stands.
Oh, I guess to Ms. Bender's question, would that, at this point, it protects us against solar panels being waste there. But does the future protect us?
Well, I mean, you, you've got the, what the facility is permitted to receive and what it isn't. So it's hazardous wastes are, are not permitted. You know, there's certain things that are very clearly prohibited, you know, free liquids, things of that nature. I don't know, a question for Ms. Lackey, with Waste Management holding the, the permits to mandate from the, on the county level, I'm not sure the mechanism, how you would prohibit it, if it's in, if it's in accordance with the, the actual permit issued by DEQ.
Mr. Chair? I'm, given there's a slight level of uncertainty with staff, I don't think it's a huge lift to ask that the county attorney take a look at this and see if it is necessary. We're not asking her to craft an ordinance. We're not at that level right now, but I'm, I support what Ms. Bender is suggesting. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd also perhaps add, you know, we could ask one of the representatives from the Department of Environmental Quality to come and make a presentation to you and address those questions, because I think is what Mr. Newchuck is saying, there's a lengthy process of, of changing your permit. It's not something that just they could do. If they did, and we found out later about it, it's a pretty big deal. And so I think that we would, you know, we could follow up with our research, we could get somebody here and, and, you know, they could talk to you about what, the process, how it works, and, and all that kind of stuff.
And I can get you the name of that person, too, from DEQ.
The, the head of the Special Waste Department, and actually Paolo Roma is somebody that we deal with when we have questions. Um, or material that we can take like asbestos, as long as it's handled properly, the, the proper manifestor present. Um, you know, Palo might be a good, uh, resource as well.
All right, um, I guess everybody is in favor of just Ms. Lackey, if you could just kind of scratch the surface and find out if they could or whatever, just get some little bit more information on, to us.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for entertaining that.
Anyone else from Mr. Nuchuk before he leaves? Nope. Thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, up next, um.
Sir, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Can, it's on discussion, can we discuss?
Mm-hmm. What, what would you like to discuss?
So, um, as is presented to you, we, it is an increased cost to the county taxpayers. And it's, it's, you know, trash is cash in King George and, um, Waste Management through their agreements, but they're, I just want to first call attention to their, their profits. So even in, in during the pandemic, their profits, profits have increased a minimum of twelve percent per year. So they're making nineteen point forty-four billion dollars a year off of trash. And we have a lot of trash. Our county citizens, if you were just to think about, if someone takes it to the convenience center or someone dumps it to dump, they have at least two hands per week times four, times the amount of citizens, because everybody has trash. And as we have more rooftops, you have more trash. And, and a lot of trash goes to the convenience centers, even if you're not using the disposals like mattresses and so forth and so on. So I'm sure all of y'all have been to the convenience centers. Um, it takes more money, more equipment to run these and, and you're seeing that in our budget. So the original agreement with Waste Management was that, that they would pay for the convenience centers. Um, and that changed. And they are, they currently pay, what was it, like two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars? That amount has never changed from the original contract. But the, the services that the county have rendered have increased dramatically. I think it would not only be fair for them to pay a more, a better share, have some kind of graduated costs for them per month as opposed to keeping it at the two thousand Yes, so that was originally, I can't remember what year, but it's a long time ago that, that number was agreed upon in that contract. But the cost gone up. Um, we also must consider that, um, our capital expenditures will continue to go up. You know, you, what's the cost of a compactor, sir?
Smaller ones, uh.
Sorry.
That's something we should probably look at. I mean, do you want to go with the fifty thousand dollar, uh, compactors? It's kind of in line with the one that we have at Sealsen. Do you want to go, you know, up to a hundred thousand? Um, it, it all depends on, you know, longevity, but you can, you can get into it starting at fifty, but then it's probably not the one you want.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So that, that alone, that's a fifty thousand or a hundred thousand dollar item. And they have a, a life of, I think it's ten years, twelve point five years. And the, um, the trucks that we're using to haul them and the dumpster have a life of ten years. So all those dumpsters that you see going down Route three are, are being transferred to the, to the main dump. But the dumpsters don't last and they're very expensive, along with, you know, um, these numbers about, you know, health insurance and benefits and so forth. I think that we need to just revisit with Waste Management. So I think there is a, a way to work on this and I think it's in the amount that you allow them to have in or the tipping fees. Is that a correct statement? You better come back up.
Yes, sir, I apologize, I couldn't hear the last bit you said.
So in re- in regards to we can, uh, negotiate with them, our best negotiation tool would be the tipping fees that are, are current now, is that correct?
Uh, well, the, the thing you had hit on, on Friday, when you were talking about the nineteenth and twentieth amendments, uh, right now, the twentieth amendment implements a, a tonnage cap. But then when that ends at the end of, uh, uh, December of twenty twenty-three, then it reverts back to the caps in the nineteenth amendment. Um, now I, I think you had raised the point that that was probably the, the next opportunity to negotiate now. And then also as Ms. Lackey is dealing with, uh, Megan Amata, uh, I, I don't know if, if they've touched upon with the Perkins expansion, um, where they were originally, the, the host agreement as it stands requires three centers to be built. We, we were advocating that additional monies, if you're paying two ninety-eight top rate two, then there should be a third increase for what is an effect of third center, but the way the seventeenth amendment is written.
There's no, there's, it's open date, it's not, there's no requirement that we open a third. Um, there's not, I mean, there's, it's in there, but it doesn't have a date to.
That's right, absolutely.
So, um, you could moot that point if you, if you, if you wanted to.
Just keep kicking the can down the road.
Uh-huh, you could, but in the, in the meantime, if you do open a third one, that means more employees, more, more trucks, more money. And so we need to try to get Waste Man- Management to encumber some of those costs instead of, um, they're making plenty of money off of landfill. I think that they should share in, in some of the.
And, and we're certainly advocating, uh, the expansion of, of Perkins because the equipment that we inherited as a result of the seventeenth amendment is, is sometimes approaching almost two decades in age. I mean, we had a piece of equipment that we took out of service last week, brought it back to the Sealsen yard, rolled it over, looked at it and had to strip the under rails off of it because of metal fatigue. Um, so our hope is with the expansion of the Perkins facility, that there will be new equipment that'll then have, uh, a much longer lifespan.
For the new equipment, um, in the contract, it, it, it voids their responsibility to pay for that new equipment. They, is that correct?
Yeah, that's a question for Ms. Lackey.
So we're still working on drafting in terms, but the current proposal is that they would expand the Perkins Corner, they would provide the equipment. Um, the twenty nineteen board action, they actually had kind of a layout and some of the equipment and specifics that they wanted. So that, that, those are, those are some of the things that I'm trying, trying to pursue through the negotiation. We're trying to look at an annual cost, cost escalator. Um, we're trying to look at additional costs once the expansion is online. Um, you know, I think Waste Management might be amenable to some increase of this annual amount. Um, but, you know, it's awfully hard to negotiate a contract term that it was written the way it was for whatever reason, it's a stagnant amount. And, you know, puts sole responsibility on the county for certain things. So we certainly have some room to negotiate, but, um, you know, I, I can't, I can't say for certain to, for certain that we're going to be able to recover all those costs that are, that are increasing costs for capital, equipment and paving of the facilities and things of that nature.
Well, I hope that we can hold them to the line, um, when it comes to, if they don't want to be a partner in this to revert back on the twenty twenty-four, as it's in the twentieth minute amendment, nineteenth amendment?
Yeah, the nineteenth, so the twentieth reverts back to the nineteenth.
Right. So I think that we would have a, would be able to have a, a good negotiation to make it more, um, sustainable for the county. So was it each two hundred and seventy thousand dollars uh, of cost is one cent on the tax dollar? So as we, that, I'm, I, I know that's not an exact number, but it's close. So if you look at these costs, you know, it, it costs, you, you might have to raise taxes. You already are encumbered this in our tax rate so that people don't really think about that. But we're going to have to encumber more if we have more responsibilities. So I guess I'm asking the board to, um, consider all these things in the renegotiation and bring it forward to you all, the information that's available to us to make it a better deal for us. That's why I wanted to bring it in front of the board.
Mr. Miller?
I, I think that what would perhaps moving forward, in addition to the research that Ms. Lackey is going to do about the, the solar panels, I, I think that it merits of your committee meeting, um, and letting us give you an overview of where we stand, what the, you know, where, what the next steps are, what, you know, kind of the timelines on all this. And, and kind of, you know, like I said, dust off that committee, let you all kind of have a, have an input. And then perhaps the committee make a presentation to the board at a future board meeting. And, you know, we, we obviously have a window here, but, you know, and it is a lengthy process, I think, as Mr. Nuchuk has indicated. It does take some time and Ms. Lackey has indicated, um, the, the amendment that she's working on right now began when Eric Gregory was your county attorney. So that's the length of time that you're involved in. So we do have some opportunity and I think that would be the, the next step I would recommend to you all is that we let the landfill committee kind of regroup, get them together, have some of these discussions and let you guys kind of kick it around, bring it back to the board with some, some recommendations or just an update, just kind of to keep this flowing because it is a critical issue for this county.
So in landfill committee, they're of course advisory. Um, but in the meantime, Ms. Lackey is negotiating with Waste Management, is that correct?
Waste Management provided a proposed draft twentieth amendment, uh, to which I've given some initial comments with some of the, uh, you know, internal comments that I've gotten from staff. There's still information that we need to communicate back to Waste Management as well as some parts of their own agreement that they just have fill in the blank for some things. So it's, it's still, I would say the negotiations are, you know, they, there's still a, 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 there's still room for certainly a lot of input from whatever you all, um, have interests or thoughts on, on ways forward.
But the landfill committee would need to know what's going on with the negotiations in regards to Ms. Lackey. Instead of having two different entities need to come together as one and present it to the board, with the board to make that final decision. So I think that she would be an integral part of that. So I don't know how that works. Do we, do we assign her to that or we, do we, how do we, how do we get that to, for her to? Or Mr. Miller, Mr. Miller could do that. I don't know.
Well, I, I think that what, what I'm hearing tonight is there was a, a re-engagement, if you will, of the landfill committee is you put on that and there's a desire to fill any vacancies. So I, I got the impression very clearly that the board would like to see the landfill committee back active again. And that could include these kind of discussions. Um, I would defer to Ms. Lackey if, if discussions are, um, about any negotiations, how that would be handled, which board would be the best. I think from a generalistic standpoint, you could have a discussion with the landfill committee about key points of where the county should be. Um, but I would defer to the board and, or to Ms. Lackey in terms of how she would want to go forward with that. I, I certainly don't want to impact her negotiating, um, approach. But I, I will tell you that the, you know, this is not something that the staff or Ms. Lackey are just, you know, winging it or working, you know, without any direction. This was originally is, but if I understand it, and I think Mr. Nuchuk provided that, I believe back in twenty eighteen, the beginnings of the twenty first amendment were authorized by the board. Is that, is that correct? I can, I don't have the exact date, but it, twenty nine, it was May of twenty nineteen?
Yes, so Waste Management came forward and proposed to expand Perkins in lieu of an additional.
Right, okay. So our actions and what Ms. Lackey is doing is just basically picking up from where the previous direction that was provided. But anyway, I, I, I think that would be the best way to do it is get a group, get your meeting, get your committee together.
It's not, it's not my committee.
Well, whoever the chair is, I would recommend that we have a meeting with them and begin maybe a giving them, getting them up to speed and then utilize the committee like, kind of like a, uh, the EDA is a committee that deals with economic development matters. Is it, you know, all landfill matters are going to go before this committee or at least go through them? And then it's a, you know, it's a funneling, if you will, ultimately to the board. It doesn't remove any authority from the board. It doesn't empower the committee to be, you know, a substitute for the board, but it would clearly allow kind of like a policymaking body that would recommend to the board the ultimate actions. And, you know, that's my, my, my thought about it.
It's true, but also with the landfill committee, if they're going to be looking at this to help the county save money, they will, will need some legal advice and at least advice on the negotiations. I, not massive, but enough to make sure that they're going down the same road. Y'all understand what I'm saying?
Yes, and you had mentioned earlier that you wanted the landfill committee to be more robust. This is a way for it to be more robust. But I will say, being one of the two that served when these two agreement, amendments were agreed on, we understood that our county attorney was doing the negotiating because that's her degree in her ballywick. So, you know, I don't know if we want to get into all those weeds, but having suggestions to the advisory committee that comes up with a, I don't want to call it a plan of attack, but a, a, um, advice for the negotiating process might be, or, or suggestions for it. I'm just trying to think off the top of my head here, but, you know, but, but that would make the landfill committee more robust. And then I would appoint my person who, uh, expired in August and then we would at least have, what, four then, correct?
So you need at least three to do it.
Well, then, um, I would like to make a motion to, uh, reappoint Elodie, and I, if I butcher her last name, I apologize, show, shown anger, uh, to the term that expired, uh, well, the four year term, so it expired on August thirty first, twenty twenty-two. So it would be August thirty first, twenty twenty-six would be the end of the term, correct then?
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair, it's a motion passes.
Thank you, so that's four.
That's a question. Um, so I've, I've been unable to, we had two resignations, uh, with the chairs. Uh, and then the, the person who inherited it, um, I have not been able to reach. Um, so I believe that's, uh, Mr. Stonehill's district. I don't know if there's additional contact information we can try reaching out.
Mr. Ackerman?
Yes, sir.
Um, I'll, I'll send you the info that I have for him.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
All right, anything further, guys? No? All right. We'll finish that up in twelve oh six, Mr. Miller, County Administrator's report.
Okay, so a couple items on here. Uh, National Opioid Settlement, as you're aware, we are participating or are going to be a receiving entity of the settlement, um, the National Opioid Settlement. Uh, we have already received, I believe, approximately forty-nine thousand dollars. Um, this is something that will play out over the period of FY thirty-nine. Um, so it's a lengthy process. Met with my team today, uh, which includes Sheriff Giles, uh, uh, Fire Chief, um, Dave Moody, Jonathan Franklin with DSS, um, and, uh, Ms. Lackey and, and Ms. Hawn. And then also I've included Chris Ha- Chris Clark on there because Chris has been attending the, um, some of the GWRC meetings. And what we're going to do is I've reached out already to, um, to the CSB, um, Executive Director to sit down and talk about our opportunities there, about how we can service King George County. There's a couple of different models that are playing around, but I think suffice it to say, well, we should be, you know, arriving at some discussion sometime after the first of the year in terms of, um, how we can make sure that the, the funds that are distributed to us on an annual basis go to, go to the benefit of King George residents through either the CSB tailoring a project that works for us or, um, some of the other models that are out there. So, um, I know the GWRC is also, um, involved in it and they're encouraging the, uh, the use of the. um, I know the GWRC is also, um, involved in it and they're encouraging the, uh, the use of the CDA, CSB. Um, and so, uh, along with the Health Department. And so we're, we're just making sure that we're a part of that and at the table. So, um, holiday schedule, if you don't know, obviously the 23rd, I believe, the 26th are our days off. And then also the second of January, Monday, the second of January. Uh, because, uh, New Year's Day falls on a Sunday. So, um, that is what just wanted to let you know. Um, couple, uh, other reminders up there. 1:00 PM Thursday, courthouse ground breaking. Hope to see you, everybody there. Wear your mud boots, I assume. Uh, uh, I know they're building a pad or they've already built it, but, um, yeah. Uh, kind of been wet lately. So, um, but I think they're going to do everything they can to accommodate that. Should be a very nice event. Um, and, uh, we're looking forward to it. Employee appreciation luncheon, 12 to 2:00 PM next Wednesday, uh, the 14th. So we hope to see you all there. The organizational meeting, I need you all to set the date. So the third is the first Tuesday in January. So if that's the day you want to do, then we'll set it for the third. If there's another date that works, then we just need it officially set. Tuesday, the third. Okay. That's it. Oh, I, I guess I would point out, uh, again, I mentioned it very briefly, but we have begun the budget process. Um, Ms. Hahn distributed the, all the good news to the departments. And so now the process will work where the departments start to build their budgets and then they'll meet with Ms. Hahn and then it'll start after the first of the year where I will be involved. And then, um, we'll have a schedule to you soon as to when we expect to start bringing it to you all. Um, we also have, uh, I will remind you that we are doing the CIP right there. If not exactly the same time, it'll be very quickly thereafter. Yes.
And this year I'd like to request from the board if you could get together your travel expenditure, expenses request for the next year and have those to me by January 6th of 2023. I would greatly appreciate it. So that I have those when we start putting things together. Thank you.
That's it.
Chair.
Mr. Collins?
So this has not been, um, previously vetted by the county administrator or any of the board members. But, um, December the 23rd is a holiday for the county employees. I was wondering if you all would be interested in giving them the 22nd also. I know it's not something that's normally occurred. You could do it next year if you want, uh, that planning. But I, I think we'd go a long way in showing the county employees that we appreciate what they do and give them a little bit more time with their families.
I don't think you're hearing any objections from any of the employees, but that's up to the board.
What days did, did you say that?
Uh, it'd be Thursday, the 22nd. So typically the board, or typically the, the holidays are too in association with Christmas. So in this case, it's either right because yes.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question in relation to that?
Sure.
So how would that affect the, the, uh, solid waste and recycling staff? Because I know you all would still have to work.
It's Saturday, the 25th, the Sunday. Uh, but we're going to have to be open the, the Friday and the Monday. It'll just increase. We'll, we'll have to pay holiday pay. Uh, but we, we can't.
About how many employees does that affect?
Um, I don't have to look at the schedule on those days because we've, we've already kind of penned out scheduling. Uh, we've tried to put more part timers on the actual holidays. I, I would have to, I could give you specific numbers. I've kind of, uh, but it's, you know, half dozen.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And we would obviously for, for fire and rescue or for the sheriff's department, um, you know, those, those folks that work it would qualify for holiday pay because if you made it an official day, then it would, they would get that time counted.
So when, um, sheriffs or the, or the rescue squad work a holiday, don't they get comp time?
I'm not certain, uh, Ms. Hahn, uh, how exactly that's handled. I believe there is some degree of that. Um, if they go over it all, you know, when you look at fire and rescue, they have, you know, their hours or, you know, like 56-hour weeks. And so it's all how it falls within that, but I.
Yeah. So it, it's all how it falls, but also, um, the way fire and rescue is set up anyway is that, um, they add holiday pay throughout the year to accommodate for all of the holidays is my understanding. Um, Sheriff's Department, um, I'd, I'd have to really look more into their overtime and everything, but we do, the county does have compensatory leave policy. We, and that's up to the, the employee, whether they want holiday, whether they want pay or they want, um, compensatory leave in place of pay, um, when working those holidays. Uh, last year, the General Assembly had taken that option away. And then they came back and changed it for locality. So that was reinstated in July of last year. So that is an option, but generally the employee um, decides whether they'd like compensatory leave or, um, whether they want to pay for that. Um, something that the state used to do was they would give what was called a floating holiday. And so if you couldn't take it on that day, you could use it another day, kind of similar to compensatory leave. But that's not one of our policies at this time.
So they're off the 26th for state. Is that correct?
Sorry?
26th.
We're off the 23rd and the 26th. So if, if, so back it up, if Christmas fell on a Friday, we would be off on the Thursday, the 24th and Friday, the 25th.
So, yeah, we follow the state, um, holiday calendar, which can be found at the, um, Virginia Department of Human Resource Management, um, website under holiday and schedule. Um, I know that next year their schedule is a little bit different. They're not given a full day. Um, the Friday before, or they're only doing a half day.
We'll have to change the personnel policy then.
Right now, that's what we do is we do follow the state, um, policy. Sometimes the governor gives out additional time. And when the governor gives out additional times, then the county policy with that as well.
I'm amenable to moving forward with, with, uh, Mr. Collins' request.
And again, that was the 22nd?
22nd, Thursday.
Thursday, 22nd.
So it'd be Thursday, 22nd, Friday, 23rd. It's already a holiday and then the weekend and then Monday, the 26th. Do we need to make a motion for that? If we were to move forward with it?
Yes, I think we need to formalize that. And, um, somewhere in the motion, you'd need to make whatever accommodations you have for those essential folks who, who can't go off duty.
Mr. Collins, would you like to make a motion since it was your idea?
Sure. Make a motion that we grant December 22nd as a county holiday for county employees. And those essential personnel will follow under the guidelines of the, um, Human Resources Department. I don't know. Anybody want to amend that?
Second.
All right. We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes.
If I may just say that you, you made a lot of people very happy or, and if those people that they will find out about it, they'll be very happy. And we really sincerely appreciate the, the support and the, um, the gesture. And we will make it work in terms of those people that are, uh, that have to work and, and how they'll be compensated. They will be, you know, treated the way we will treat them on any other holiday. So thank you again.
All right. Thank you. Um.
Mr. Chair, can I ask the administrator a question, please, before we move on?
Absolutely.
Um, so Mr. Miller, a couple of meetings ago, I mentioned in a board report that we had the ability to apply for the local assistance and tribal consistency fund for ARPA funds because we have a federal installation within our county. Um, earlier this week, or last week, I'm sorry, December 1st, I received a, an email from NAGO uh, stating that if you're receiving this message, your county has not certified for a payment yet. Do we have an update on that?
I believe Ms. Hahn will provide that. We just talked about that this morning.
So yes, I had difficulty getting into the website and it is finally open and I verified with, or that I can get into it. I'm not sure. I've had to sign on for it for a long time. So I verified with, um, Mr. Mello this morning, actually, that I am able to get into the website and that I will go ahead and I will be completing that tomorrow.
Very good. Thanks so much. I don't want us to miss out on any money.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Uh, I guess we have a couple of motions.
Yes, I'll make the first. I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to State Code Section 2 dot 2 dash 3711A8 for consultation with legal counsel regarding the provision of legal advice with regard to authority and scope of non-disclosure agreements. I invite the county administrator and county attorney to attend as needed because their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2 dot 2 dash 3712F.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none?
There is discussion.
Okay.
So non-disclosure agreements put the county at a liability. So it doesn't really, it puts all of us at liability, all the taxpayers at liability. So NDAs are for the benefit of the company, not for the beneficiary of the citizens. This closed meeting, um, as written talks about, um, the authority and scope. So if the county attorney is going to give, um, views on the county and scope, I don't know why we can't do it in an open meeting unless it's a specific NDA. And I asked the question at a time and I then never received an answer. She wouldn't give me the, any information on what we're going to be discussing in there. So I don't think that just because legal counsel is present, if you look in the exceptions, um, just because they're present, their mere presence doesn't make it legal to have a closed meeting. I don't know why we can't get information in the public. So people will know about the non-disclosures and what, what information she wants us to have.
So that might be challenging if it's in a closed session, but consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel. As you said, nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because of an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Consulted doesn't necessarily mean legal advice, just means consulted. I, I think, but maybe I'm wrong. I'll ask Ms. Lackey if, if that is, I understand is true. I would imagine we will be provided with some legal advice during closed session would be my guess.
So at the, the previous meeting, there was a request by Mr. Collins for, um, advice or, uh, prohibition of NDAs applying to him personally. Um, the advice that I will render applies equally to all members of the board. It is legal advice. It's subject to confidentiality. Um, the rules of procedure state all members shall maintain the confidentiality of any opinion provided by the county attorney. Um, and other attorney-client privileged communication or work product unless otherwise authorized by the board. So I would strongly recommend that the board have the opportunity to hear my advice before they consider whether a majority decision is to share that advice with the public. Um, there's certainly well-founded reasons in law that, uh, attorney advice is considered confidential. So my recommendation and the reason it's on the agenda as a closed session item is because there, there are certainly a, a number of legal issues involved. It's not something where my presence in the room makes it a confidential matter. I'm going to give you, or I'm prepared to give you um, legal advice and consultation with regard to the scope and authority of non-disclosure agreements generally. Um, so that, that is, does not have to be a specific document. This is legal advice on an ongoing basis, which is what I understand the nature of the request to have been at the last meeting.
Mr. Chair. So my question last time was not, was a specific, so I'm one of five members that the county attorney works for and gives advice such as, um, conflict of interest. Um, she gives conflict of interest advice, but doesn't tell the rest of the board that one member asks for advice on conflict of interest. Simply asked for advice and legally about not being a part of non-disclosures. And so she could have gave me the answer and then entered into a closed meeting. It had something to do with specific NDAs. Because NDAs generally, you, you, you don't need to go into closed mission. It really smacks on transparency is one of my big problems. Why would we go into a closed meeting on NDAs? When we know they're problematic? And it, and it gives us a liability. Why couldn't we have general information that there's a specific topic? In regards to one, we could go in closed meeting for that, not, not just for, uh, authority and scope of non-disclosure agreements.
So Mr. Collins, what I'm hearing is you want to have this debate out in the open is what I'm hearing.
So it's legal counsel advice.
Right. But I, I don't think that's where he's going is, am I correct?
No, that's not where I'm going. I, what I'm going, where I'm going is, is that if we're going to get, um, information on authority and scope of non-disclosure agreements, let's do it in public. If it gets specific to a non-disclosure agreement that the county is under, then we can go into closed session. That's where I'm going. So the county, the county citizens should know the general authority and scope of non-disclosures and what our responsibility as a board, if we're under them or we don't have to be under them, so forth and so on. I don't think there's anything, um, just because she's the county attorney and the client, we're the client.
So what you're saying is not going to close session. I'm just trying to filter and basically have the debate of what, introduction of what it is, what a non-disclosure, what it contains, why, why it occurs, why these things happen. And then basically debate it. Is what, am I got that wrong?
One is not why.
Well, for the public, you know, a lot of people might not know. I mean, we throw around acronyms all the time.
That's fine. Why? But, um, the scope and, um, an authority of, you know, she can answer in a presentation, she can say the scope and authority. Does one board member have the authority to not sign a non-disclosure? Who has a, the authority to sign a non-disclosure? On and on and on. So that's what I want to hear in public. Again, if it's about one particular, there's only two agreements that I know that exist since I've been on. So if it's in regards to one of those two specifically, then that would be appropriate. Otherwise, it wouldn't be appropriate.
So maybe this would be better handled. And I'm throwing this out because I was going to bring this up next. going to bring this up next meeting, is a lot of localities have board retreats where they come up with standards and principles and strategic vision and mission statements and all those lovely terms that gets thrown around all the time. And and I don't disagree that maybe we need to relook at these agreements and 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 the process we do and when you sign into them, but maybe that would be a better discussion, robust discussion during a retreat that we might schedule at our organizational meeting than doing this now?
So, on the table is a motion that's been properly seconded. So, it can be tabled, be discussed at another meeting or or retreat or whatever, but I think that it, I don't think that we're should go into this closed meeting with the amount of information that I have. I don't feel comfortable going in that closed meeting.
I I don't know. I guess the question is, do we want legal consultation on getting going into NDAs? If if we do, that is legal consultation and and legal consultation is a privilege correspondence between the board and and the county attorney. So, at that point, it is very reasonable to have a closed meeting for. If you're if you're saying you're not looking for Ms. Lackey to provide any legal counsel in any way whatsoever on this topic, then yeah, there there's no need.
Yeah, on specific NDAs.
No, it doesn't have to be on a specific, it's it's legal.
Yeah, I think that you're trying to, I think that's trying to circumvent the open meeting rules.
Legal advice. Legal advice in from legal counsel is is privileged between board member and and legal counsel.
I understand what privilege is.
So, if she's providing legal advice, it doesn't have to be on a particular one. If it's legal advice on entering into an NDA and understanding that, then then yeah, that that's legal advice. I mean, that's that's applicable.
Unless there's something that's so pressing that has to be closed, I don't know why we has it has to be closed. If it's so pressing that the legal advice in that room cannot be told to the public, that's a bad thing to do. So, if she is concerned about her legal advice having challenge in court, well, her legal advice would have challenge in court whether it's closed or not closed.
Agree.
So, so I don't I don't know about, I think it's a slippery slope. I don't think that there it meets the requirement of the closed meeting rules without specific information.
I don't I don't think it's a slope at all. It's legal advice. That is, hover, period. It just is.
I differ from your your opinion. I'm concerned that that could cause us liability to go into a closed meeting that could be challenged in the courts.
Okay. I I disagree.
If I may, it is a persuasive opinion only. However, the board could make a request of the Virginia FOIA counsel on whether or not the scope of the proposed closed meeting is acceptable. I would submit that I I believe in my professional legal judgment that it applies to specific legal matters. It does not have to be a specific document that has to be reviewed and discussed in closed session, but I I offer that as an option.
So, Mr. Chair, it puts all of us in a situation where we have to make a judgment of is it a legal meeting in there or is it not? And what, given the information that we have available to us to go into that meeting, I'm concerned. Of course, if you all decide to go in that meeting and I don't have that information, would I get that information? Because I wasn't in that meeting? Would I?
The rules of procedure provide that if advice is rendered to one member, it is shared with others unless it's prohibited by law. You mentioned conflict of interest. Conflict of interest is a little bit different because my opinions are persuasive only and there's also personal liability for members. So, that's kind of a an apples and oranges kind of situation, I would I would say. But, you know, certainly if I provide an opinion to one member, then every other member is entitled to that opinion and that's why I had intended to have a closed meeting so that everyone could hear the same information, benefit from questions asked by others. But if that's not the format that's desired or necessary, that's the prerogative of the board.
So, I'm going to put it out there again, since from what I'm hearing in this closed session, we're not going to be talking about specific NDAs that we have already signed and agreed to. I propose putting it back out. We have this discussion. We have a retreat where we talk about these things and maybe do some things a little differently and maybe talk about NDAs and whether like one of the things that Fairfax has said is that when an applicant comes in and and once it's an application that the NDA ends, that's that's a choice. Other localities do this. Other localities have these retreats to go through their policies and try to fix things they want to change or or new members and make that's where I'm coming from. Instead of asking this out, making this a big a big production to do it that way.
I would I would submit or just point out that your retreat is is going to be subject to the public as well.
That is correct. That is correct. And all other localities do that also.
Public, yes.
They all do that, but they it it makes it a more formal setting where you can have these discussions instead of sitting up in a dais in this formal setting. You actually sit down and discuss things and do positive things for the counties and the citizens are welcome to come if they've chose.
And I if I can offer too, and I know that this is something that is, you know, I'm not an attorney, but I I know that what what Ms. Lackey and I were were talking about, and I think when we talked to the chair about this as well, that based on the request that was made at the last meeting, is that there was possibility that there would be some discussion about particular NDAs that exist and that were limiting to or that were prescribed to you all. And so, that I think that's where we began this process was that there was going to be some discussion at some point during this discussion of particular NDAs and kind of how they came about, why they were done, the way they were done. And so, that's perhaps another reason why we were requesting that it be a closed discussion. It's not certainly something that's being kept from the public. It's that's not at all. It's just that the nature of what some of the NDAs that that we're talking about were things that were oisted on this county several years in the in the past that are still applicable. And then also one that was just more recently dealing with some highly sensitive information and and some proprietary information by one of the applicants that they requested that there be an NDA on it. So, I think that's why we looked at it that way and we framed it this way when we put it forward to it as an idea of putting on the agenda. I don't I don't know that we were just thinking it was going to be a policy discussion because I think I agree with Ms. Binder and with Mr. Mr. Collins. If you're going to have a policy discussion about when you create NDAs, that that's not something that maybe is going to get into the legal aspect of things unless your attorney is giving you advice who you who she she represents you and she is the one who gives you the legal advice. And if you choose not to take her legal advice, then I don't know what happens at that point. I think they might you might have to be represented by your own counsel. But I but she is there for your protection. She's there to to keep the county out of any trouble. And and so, I think that's why we looked at it this way. But that's my weighing in on it and you guys can do what you want to do.
But, Mr. Chair, the county, Mr. Chair, can I be recognized?
Sure.
So, the county attorney earlier spoke about that exact matter. So, he hit the nail on the head. First, the county attorney has spoke with you and Mr. Miller in regards to this, what's going to be in that. And she just said that all board members will have the information. I don't have the information. And Mr. Miller spoke, he said that you're going to speak about specific NDAs and that's not in the motion. If it was in the motion, I think it would be a more legal standing than it does now.
If I could just clarify the
Miller?
The the reason that that, of course, we spoke with Mr. Stonehill about it and not the entire board is that Mr. Stonehill as the chair, just like Ms. Cupka last year as the chair and whoever future chairs are, we have an agenda-setting meeting. And so, we meet with him and kind of go through this and say, okay, these are the items that are going to be on this agenda. Are you good with it and all that kind of stuff? And then he has the job of of, you know, kind of giving us the overview of how the agenda comes together. You all certainly can add things to the agenda either at the meeting or in if you send information, like each of you have sent me information beforehand, you know, appointing somebody or asking that we consider a particular item, we then will add those to the agenda or it, you know, but essentially, it's always been resting, is my understanding, with the chair in terms of putting things on the agenda. And if Mr. Stonehill had said, I have a problem with this, then we wouldn't have had this on the agenda. I mean, we would have waited for you guys to talk about it and then direct us. And that's how it works.
So, there's a difference of opinion because three of y'all have more information than I have. And Ms. Binder made a suggestion to table it where we could talk more about this, where there wouldn't be one member that is not comfortable with what's going on. Ms. Lackey is comfortable with her information. I'm not comfortable. She is an employee of all the board. Don't forget about that, all the board, not just, and Mr. Miller is an employee of the board. So, you know, I think that it would be prudent to table it until there's some clarity to this.
Does anybody else have any more discussion? Because I'm going to I'm going to call discussion to an end and move on with the motion that has been properly seconded. No more discussion? All right, we have a motion that's properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all, any nays?
Nay.
All right, Chair votes aye. Motion dies. Okay, do we have another motion?
I move that that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to State Code Section 2 dot 2 dash 3711A1 for discussion and consideration of the performance and salary of the county attorney. I invite the county administrator and county attorney to attend as needed because their presence will be will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2 dot 2 dash 3712F.
Second.
All right, we have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are in closed session.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such bus, public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none? If we can all so-certify, please?
So-certify.
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 Chair so-certifies. We're back in open session.
I move to adjourn until Tuesday, December 20th at 6:30 in the boardroom.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're here in.